Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the April 2024 meeting of the St. Mary's County Library Board of Trustees. Uh, my name is Michael Dunn. I'm the president of the board. Let's do some introductions, uh, starting with our vice president.
John Johnston, Vice President.
Tressa Setlack, Treasurer.
John Walters, Board Member.
Wonderful. Uh, we do have a quorum of four members, so we can proceed with the meeting. Um, before we get started with the approval of the agenda, I would like to take a moment to share a proclamation from the Commissioners of St. Mary's County that they issued in honor of National Library Week. Michael, do you want to provide any context to this or?
Um, well, the Commissioners very graciously did give us a proclamation for National Library Week and we work with them to, um, uh, we, we work with them to have attendance there that day. So this passed, uh, Tuesday, we had a number of our staff come out and, uh, give us the proclamation for National Library Week and if you'd like to read it.
Yes. So the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas St. Mary's County is home to three public library facilities and one mobile library, which are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. And whereas St. Mary's County Library connects people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, public access computers, and technology training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. And whereas St. Mary's County Library and its services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, offering opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas and become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes in the, in addition to books. And whereas St. Mary's County Library encourages early literacy through programs, specialized staff, and educational materials, which teach parents and caregivers how to develop children's vocabulary, self-expression, and reading comprehension, all tools they need to become successful readers and lifelong learners. And whereas in times of crisis and in everyday interactions, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities. And whereas St. Mary's County Library strives to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the population of St. Mary's County and ensure equity of access for all while also continuing to meet the needs of their customers. And whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. St. Mary's County Library is joining library staff, supporters, and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. And now therefore, we, the Commissioners of St. Mary's County hereby proclaim April 7th through 13, 2024 as National Library Week in St. Mary's County and encourage all residents to connect with their library by visiting in person or accessing resources and services online. Hold for applause. There we go.
Was that all in six-point type?
Uh, that's an incredible message and we all really appreciate the Commissioners honoring National Library Week. And thank you to the staff for celebrating National Library Week and giving us a reason for the season here in St. Mary's County. Um, I would like to welcome a fifth trustee, Judith Gwynn. Glad you could join us. Welcome. All right. So let's move along to the next item on our list, approval of the agenda, and I believe we have a couple of revisions.
We, we have a couple of additions, late arriving additions. Uh, one addition was the proclamation and also, uh, that I have distributed to you, the county's appreciation, um, uh, certificates for your participation on the board. Um, and, uh, welcome Dorothy Waters, uh, as well. Good morning, Dorothy. Thanks. Um.
Mics. Turn your mics on, please.
Thank you. Under, um, Director's Report informational, um, I would like to add an item seven, which will be the network and phone connectivity through the county. Uh, you asked about that last week and I got an update on that for you. And we have a, um, uh, a document that, um, came in last night that, um, I was asked from one board member to, uh, distribute to you and I have, it is Director Evaluation Considerations. Uh, and so that will be, um, under New Trustee Business.
So we can entertain a motion to approve this agenda with the two additions Michael described of an additional item under the Director's Report informational and an additional item under New Trustee Business.
Question, will, as, as part of the minutes then from this meeting, will that be incorporated in type in the agenda? For historic purposes? I mean, we'll be working off that today. But when we look back at the minutes of this meeting, will those things be in the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Well, I move to, uh, adopt as amended.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, John. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving this agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries. Next item up is approval of the March 2024 minutes. There are no questions or comments. We can entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Don't move. I move to approve.
Thank you, Judith.
One second.
Thank you, Tressa. Any discussion? Give folks a moment. All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Motion carries. All right. Next up, we have approval of the monthly expense ledger, the EALs. We can entertain a motion to approve these.
So moved.
Thank you, John.
You have a second?
Thank you, Tressa. Discussion. All right. All those in favor of approving the EALs as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? No, no questions. What? Oh.
Take it personal.
Okay. Um. All right. And then let's move on.
This is a historic moment. Everyone, please take notes.
I know. All right. Let's keep the good times rolling. Tressa, Treasurer's Report.
All right. Uh, reporting out for the months of January, February, March, um, the Vanguard accounts, uh, each saw a loss, uh, based on market fluctuation. Uh, the original saw a loss of $700 and some change. And the Rudolph account saw a loss of $155 and some change. And you have all the balances, uh, the current values in front of you on your report. The Schwab account for the same time period did see a positive change in value of $74,517 and some change.
I may ask a question, uh, up at the top. So we have original and Rudolph. Which one of those is funding, um, interns?
Rudolph.
Rudolph is.
Any other questions, conversation? Thank you, Tressa.
You're welcome.
Moving on to the Smurla Report. John, what do you got for us?
That was quite a, uh, full week as, um, Ruth and John were at the, uh, the corporate meeting and the Tri-County meeting. I'm going to my notes here. Uh, but, um, we had some discussion at the corporate meeting of, uh, General Assembly Update, including the, uh, the bill involving the membership on the Smurla Board and, and, and some of the boards around the state where it goes up to two public members along with the one, um, you know, trustee represented from the county. And, and there'll be some work going on with, uh, the, the Freedom to Read Bill, the, um, to amend that. And, uh, and we, uh, heard from, uh, Irene Padilla, the, um, and she'll be stepping down after 22 years.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm. So the, um, and there was some presentations here. I brought the packet just for reference. We had, um, read a couple of, um, informational sessions that were useful. And, uh, the, uh, the next day, we had the, at the formal, um, uh, Smurla Board meeting, which was truncated, uh, did it due to time, but, uh, uh, we elected officers. Um, uh, the new, uh, Ron, Ron Croupy is stepping down. Uh, he'll be, he'll be treasurer now. We elected him as treasurer. Um, Suzanne Darby is the new president and Pat Vayer, Vayer is, uh, the VP. And, um, we had some discussion of the, the budget for 2025. Um, there were, uh, I think there was one thing that had, had to be adjusted, so we will have approval that, uh, in, at the May meeting. Uh, we, we scheduled a meeting for, uh, May 21st. And we had a presentation on our, uh, actuarial study, which we do every two years from Boomer Shown Consulting that, um, that, uh, regarding the, uh, the plan for, uh, med, medical care for retirees, um, insurance. And, and it looks like it's in very good shape, um, excellent funded ratio. Um, and, and of course, the, the board will, uh, uh, decide its contribution for the coming year for that, for that plan, but it, and I have the, uh, uh, the PowerPoint that they presented right here, if you'd like to see it. But we had, uh, you know, it like, uh, more contributions and diversified portfolio were, uh, one of, among the factors that enables the plan to do well.
Thank you, John.
Welcome. I have that right here.
Questions, comments?
John, there was, there was one part in the, um, in the discussion about discrimination.
Mm-hmm.
And you'll remember, apparently it was so new that the lady added it in red at the bottom of all the things you gotta watch out for.
Yeah.
Was it genetic or how, what was the phraseology there?
Yeah, I think, uh, genetic-based discrimination is, as I understood it, had to do with the, um, you know, things like if, if, you know, someone has a predisposition to a certain type of cancer, it's, um, it's, uh, similar things.
Yeah. So I won't hire you because your family has lupus and you'll wreck our healthcare costs, that kind of a thing.
Yeah. That's the way I understood it.
That, that, that's absolutely correct, John. Exactly what you just said. I was there for that part of the meeting. And, and so if someone has a pre-existing condition or their family has a history of, say, cancer, or as you said, lupus, um, we as employers cannot say, we're not going to hire you because you're going to provide extra cost to us down the line. And it's a relatively new, uh, addition.
So that leads me to this question. Have we got that itemized in our personnel manual about our own do's and don'ts?
Um, yes, I'm pretty sure that we do, don't we? Yeah.
I, we don't, I don't know that we are specific to gender. I mean, to, um, genetic discrimination, but we, we don't.
From the personnel manual, though, a, a, something that covers this.
Yeah, I, I think we cover most of it. And we, we don't ever check that either. So we're not asking our employees that information.
Yeah, it would be basically illegally obtained information. From hacking, internet, those types of people get your medical records or disclose something that's supposed to disclose. So you shouldn't have the information, but obviously it's been happening. Um, so they're making a law against it.
And it would be covered under HIPAA in any case, but I think the concern is precisely what you say is that in an era of social media, especially, people have very little privacy and something that you think might have been hidden would not have been. Um, there's just all kinds of ways to discover this. Again, a hacking, as you say.
I think it would be good to ensure that on our non-discrimination policy that we do touch on this for future. So not everybody in this room with discussion is going to be here in the future. So I think it should be, you know, a, I don't know if it's gonna take an amendment or not.
So I already.
I think we should formalize that as one of those non-discrimination issues.
I, I, I think there's something in there that covers this already, but we will double check and bring it back to you next month as opposed to making something now.
I have a list of changes that need to be made to the personnel manual because our staff are very careful about their reading and they have given me a list, um, of typos and that kind of thing. I'll check it then and I, I, I think it's fine to add just the word genetic into.
Yeah. We'll bring that back to you next month.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you. Thank you. Did anybody make it to the retreat on April 9th? I'm curious how that was.
Yeah, that's. It was the 10th.
That was the, oh, okay. Sorry.
The ninth. The retreat and then the forum.
Yeah, the three of us went and, and Michael came for part of it. So it was, it was good. It was, um, uh, my takeaway is there was a, there was a lot of information and really, really good financial discussions at the last hour. But there was a lady, Margaret Sullivan. She's probably the director of the Nonprofit Institute at CSM. Uh, you probably know her, Michael, I think, right?
Yes.
Um, fabulous. She offers all kinds of assistance, even she's in, if you want a grant, I'll do the research for you and find your grant. And I don't know if you are aware of that. You probably are. Yeah. Um. She suggested, um, because we came at end of session just a few days ago in Annapolis, that we think about that the Southern Maryland Libraries and Smurla think about holding our own reception next year and invite members to come and present more of a united front, which I like the whole concept of that, you know, there's power in numbers and a united front with any issues we have next year. Of course, it was to take a little planning. Um, and then, you know, hold the reception and, and then they come in. Um, not just, not just for asks, but also to sell the library. Um, these are all the fabulous services we offer to our Southern Maryland community. Are you aware of all the things we do, similar to what you did with the Commissioners a few weeks ago, Michael? Um, that they're not aware of all the services you provide all the time. And this is, um, a community touch point. This is really important to our whole Southern Maryland community. So when we come in and ask you guys for support and funding, it's, uh, it's a more of a group and this is why. So I thought that was an interesting concept that we would, um, and I don't know how that's a Smurla thing, or if we, the three presidents of the board start talking to each other or how, um, it's a, it's a little early, but it's never too early to see. There was interest in that.
She used a phrase that really struck home with me. She described the library as the heartbeat of a community.
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought that was a pretty powerful description of what a good library system is.
Right, right. Um.
We, we used to have a breakfast reception for all the delegations and Smurla hosted that. Um, that was pre-pandemic and I don't think we've done it since the pandemic and we have talked about it, um, among the library directors and, um, with Ashley, the Smurla Director, to reinvent that. Um, it's just a question of the delegation often being so busy and the attendance wasn't always as great as we might like. Um, but we also do that touch point with them on Library Legislation Day. So we visit their offices individually and talk with them and talk about services, uh, as well as, you know, here's pending legislation for libraries. Um, but I, I certainly, you know, think it's an idea worth revisiting and just see if we couldn't do that. The other place we do that is the Southern Maryland, uh, delegation reception. The delegates themselves have an, a, a night in Annapolis and you recall, I invited you to come on the bus. Um, it really is a great opportunity to talk with our county, um, because they ride up on the bus. Um, but then we talk to the delegates who were there.
Does the county still do a breakfast?
As a matter of fact, um, they're doing, the Chamber does and it's next Thursday is the, uh, Chamber, um, uh, delegation breakfast. And I, Judith, you have, uh, secured a spot in that, I believe.
There's one out in breakfast.
Yeah. So I did send that invite out and, and Judith responded. It's, I'm afraid it's too late to, to do any more. Um, the deadline has passed. But yes, that's, uh, they, they do, the Chamber does two of those. One is virtual, of course, at the beginning of the session, and this one's post-session with the actual breakfast.
Judith, thank you for representing us at the breakfast. Eat some bacon for me, please.
So you were gonna ask a question, John, on that concept.
Yes, we, Library Legislation, Light, uh, Library Legislative Day. Um, we go to Annapolis, we have a breakfast, we invite our, our delegates to that. Um, then we visit them out in their offices and there's a proclamation on both the House and the Senate side for national or as Maryland Library Legislative Day.
Yeah. I, I think that's a good idea, if possible, like breweries.
Well, the reason that, I believe they're held in in Annapolis, uh, either in one of the buildings or hotel or conference room is because they're literally right there. They they can walk across the street, either in the morning, get breakfast, or in the evening and get their glass of wine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's why they do it there, because you can, they're so busy that you can grab them with some free food.
Right.
And, uh, and, and now I realize that, um, you know, you, you don't necessarily get a great turnout, but even the few can help, even the few can help turn the numbers and kind of spread the word. So.
Well, and, and you, you could do it before the legislative session or after it. And it doesn't have to be, you know, contemporary with the legislative session when they are so very busy. Um, so that, just something we'll need to title noodle on.
Great. Any final comments about Smurla or the related topics we've been discussing? Okay, Michael, let's turn it over to you for some celebrations.
All right. Well, um, our first celebrations are going to be hip, hip parades and we have a couple, at least one person here. Um, and this is for Katie Kalinda, Emma Rollinson, Allison Guy, Sandy Kleist, Rosa Nakamoto, Connor, Connor Robertson, and Andy Tidings. And it's the same.
We have two additions to that. Chris, Christine Biglin and Jill Hutchinson also helped with the programs.
Um, if I could get their hip, hip parades later then. Um, thank you for your work to create an excellent program highlighting the upcoming solar eclipse for all ages. Your program helped our community be more informed and prepared to experience the eclipse while having a fun and informative experience. And, um, I typically don't like to call out our, our honorees, but Connor is here. So Connor, would you like to say anything about the program or you can shake your head no if you don't want to?
I attended the mobile library program and it was amazing. The kids were doing all of the activities. Um, it, it was a truly community, uh, can't talk today. It was truly a community event. It was at Dorsey Park and there were kids and families all over the lawn, picnicking and hanging out and then people in the pavilion and people in the mobile library, uh, kids on the playground. It was, it was really awesome. And the, uh, crafts that were planned by Connor and Andy were really cool. The pizza box oven, um, to make s'mores was a hit for sure. Yeah. So we did run out of glasses. We tried to give one per family. Unfortunately, you can, can't control other people's behavior. So, um, there, you know, we did get a, one complaint that they didn't get glasses, but it was really out of our control. Um, and the phone was literally ringing off the hook at all three branches on, um, Monday morning. It was crazy how many people were trying to find glasses and we were out at that point.
Where did you get the glasses from? Did you go online and order them from Amazon or something?
I believe they came from Star Network. Um, yeah. They were actually distributing them all across the country to libraries. So, but it was a limited amount that we received.
We, we did learn from last partial eclipse and we had like 2,500 pairs of glasses and it wasn't enough.
Wow.
Um, it, we had a run on them and people were very upset because we had said, well, we've got glasses. So we were a little bit more circumspect this time, but there was a program that involved, um, the pinhole camera. Uh, obviously we had the glasses programs. Um, another one, another program that we were doing.
I do have to speak today.
Uh, we did the solar ovens. We did, uh, glow-in-the-dark bra-
We did the solar ovens. We did glow in the dark bracelet making. And then there was a, like sundial that the kids could make with some string and like a template that we had. And then we just had some like coloring sheets and other activities for the younger kids. But yeah, the solar oven was the big one. So, yeah.
So all things I'll take to the next time we present to the commissioners.
Oh yeah, we got them from Slice House. They donated them to us. We got two thousand, no, no, we got 200, sorry. Yeah, 2,000. I was looking at the sunglasses. We got 200 pizza boxes from Slice House as a donation. So a big thank you to them. We sent 50 to each location for the program. So, yeah, it was a good, it was a really good turnout.
Well, thank you to our partners at Slice House, purveyors of delicious pizza and generous to the community. Congratulations, everybody, on such an innovative program, way to seize the opportunity, build community partnerships. And how cool that we're having library programs in Dorsey Park. That's amazing. We have a couple of other celebrations and those are LADI, the Library Assistant Training Institute that staff who do not have an MLIS attend in order to find more about how libraries run and library values and our history and traditions and operations. And so Christine Nagoyan has graduated from the advanced program. Brian Youngs and Rita Baldwin have graduated from the early start program. So that's just an important part of staff development. And congratulations to them for finishing that training, which, you know, we, we tried to give them some release time while they're doing that, but it's a very busy time for those employees. So.
And we have three staff members here right now going through LADI. And this is one of their requirements to sit through a board meeting.
Welcome and we apologize. Well, moving right along then. Michael, thank you for reading the proclamation. I did give everybody a blue folder which has an appreciation from the county for your service on the board last year. And you take it home suitable for framing. But I, I, I too join the county and thank you for all you do for the library. Thank you so much. Moving into our fiscal year 24 budget review, I'd like to point out that there's an additional sheet there for you. And at the request of one of the board members, John Walters, thank you, John. This tracks the ups and downs of the library expenditures for you. So you can see, that's it right there. It's got graphs, but on the other side, if you look, it also has the actual numbers. So some people might do better looking at the numbers. Some people might do better looking just at the charts. But this tracks things as they come in and they come out. And you see it's a sort of a bimonthly cycle whereby it looks like there's a whole lot of money. And then over the next two months, you see it move its way down. And that gives you some idea roughly of how the budget flows. But on the document itself, the typical Excel spreadsheet. Here, Dorothy, it's, there you go. I've got it right there. There you go. With 75% of the year gone by, and isn't that amazing? We mostly are doing pretty well, obviously with some of the utilities, those are behind because we get billed late for them. But most everything is within tolerance. But later today, we, we did have an area that has gone gone into the red or will go into the red. We will ask you to do a budget amendment for just because we will need a little bit more in those budget lines and they relate to supplies and we'll cover those in more detail later. I'd just like you to please ask if you've got any questions about any of the budget lines.
Okay, I'll jump in. Mobile library expenses are very low compared to predictions. Do you think this is an adjustment to reality because it's our first year? Or is there something abnormal happening?
No, they, we, we didn't really get the mobile library till January. So this was, you know, we were anticipating a full year of expenses. So I don't think that that's a mistake. I think it's simply that we didn't get the mobile library online as quickly as we obviously had hoped. So I know, I think that that budget item will probably stay the same next year and we'll probably be spending all that next year.
So stay around 28 for, 28,000 for 25.
Yes. So when Sandy and I, mostly Sandy, did the research on the first year's costs of maintenance and fuel and all of that. We're doing this based on several counties and other places that have had a mobile library. And again, like Michael said, this budget was made last May, when we thought the mobile library was arriving in August. So it was a full year's budget, which we of course did not start till January. So we know we have that and we're planning to probably be asking for some movement on that at the end of the fiscal year into other budgets that go over. So it's not like we're going to not spend that money. We are, we're just going to move it into other places. But for next year, we plan to keep it the same so that we'll have an idea of what a full year looks like in the budget process for the mobile library.
I mean, that was my question.
While Judith is looking, let me just, thank you, Belinda, for developing this. I think this is a really helpful tool. So thank you for preparing this, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it is very helpful.
Please let me know if you have any questions on it.
On page five, expenses. The first line is total donation expenses from FOL and just donations. So we're over as having spent an extra $3,709. Is that my reading that correctly?
Yes, because we had donation money in our fund balance. So it was preset. So we got 20,000 this year, but we still had donation money from last fiscal year. And donation money and FOL money does span past the fiscal year if we wanted to.
So that was from the fund, the assigned fund balance?
It's the restricted fund balance.
From last year. Okay, that was my question.
You'll see the same thing in the FOL budget at the end of the year because we're planning on using most of the restricted budget this year.
That's all. I have a question. Page one, do you still have COVID hours?
We do. We do pay our staff if they test positive for COVID up to a certain amount of days. We did try to pull that back and then we, there was a resurgence of COVID. And we had several staff members out and it became a hardship. So we put it back in.
Now, basically December through February, we had another round of a even more communicable, but fortunately less virulent strain of COVID. So it was even easier, even easier to catch, but it didn't tend to put people in the hospital in part because of vaccinations. So.
We've also found that they're returning to work faster.
The same amount of money that, that covers the tests and the masks that we've been distributing as a.
No, that is provided by the health department. That is a partnership with the health department. They provide us the masks and the COVID tests and our staff just distribute.
On the subject of staffing, how are we doing about replacing that vacancy, filling the vacancy?
Which vacancy?
The young lady who was hired away for higher.
Oh, we're, we're all set. We, we are, we are, we are pretty much fully staffed. We, we find that people love to come to work for the library. We don't have trouble keeping or, or attracting employees. And we've also noticed this year, although we'll be giving you a report at the end of the fiscal year, a lower number of people leaving. And we really think that the the influx of money that we put almost all into staffing for this year has helped us immensely. You know, people, people got a nice little COLA raise at the start of July. And we're, we're finding that that's helping with retention of employees. But yeah, we, we really don't have trouble filling slots. Lots of people like to work the library. And in many cases, people who are substitutes with us who would like to work for the library find that they have a foot in the door because they've already got some knowledge of our policies and procedures. Yeah. So you need, you would need a program to keep track of all of this. But basically, when a vacancy happens, what it usually means is.
A lot of HR paperwork then.
Any other questions about this budget document? Michael, I assume that next month we'll be approving the FY25 budget or? Probably in June, actually, because the numbers won't be absolutely final when we next meet. As far as I know, the county has a particular time when they have their final budget approved and it's later May. So typically we wait until we know exactly, you know, it's in stone. And then you have June, we present several options to you and you're able to make recommendations on the budget, but it'll be finalized before the July or the start of the fiscal year.
Thank you. And the county is going to wait on the public hearing. Am I right on that?
My understanding is that the county commissioners are going to use the public forum to hear from constituents. And they have said in public session, if enough people, and they didn't stipulate a number, turn out to say, we do not want our taxes raised from three to 3.2%, I believe it was. In order to fund the schools, that's the money that was going to be funding money for the schools who did not get as much from the state as was expected this year. That they will rescind that recommendation to raise taxes. So we don't yet know the final county budget. If they opt to rescind that, then the whole budget process, the whole budget recommendation could be changed. And we would have ample notice of what any effect it would have on us would be. And we could make appeals if necessary. So my, my hope is that it will stay the same for us no matter what. But we won't know for quite some time, for say another, say another month, because after the public hearing, they have to bring the budget back in May. Thank you. No other questions, then I'll move along to a security update. I have some figures to get a emergency button that will notify and it will go through a vendor. It's going to be $2,500 per library. And then we get one for the mobile library as well. So we'd be looking at $10,000 upfront. There would be additional expenses of, it's, it's not very expensive. It's going to be like a thousand dollars per library per year to have that monitored. So we are, you know, we are working, moving forward with this. We do have to go through the county. There's one thing that I'm waiting for more information on that we'll be able to proceed on without having the county be a part of that. So that, that process is moving forward and we will, you know, we've saved a little bit of money out from friends' money this year to try to make sure that we could start that up. So sorry that there's not more immediate details, but it can take time to, to work through the process. Appreciate the update. Thank you. Legislative update. We've had the close of the session and it would seem that four bills became final. And there's a summary in your packet, Senate Bill 248, H. Bill 285. That's about, and I'm just going to really summarize these. That is about the regional libraries. And it is now the case that Smurla, our regional would have two members of their board from the public and one member from the three constituent libraries. So it's basically just changed. It used to be there had to be two members from each of the library boards. Now it's only one. And that has passed. Senate Bill 250 and House Bill 208. We were already not charging minors for overdoses. This is just some clarification of the language. It says that we don't have to, if, so here's what happens. Somebody's lost a book, they think. They pay us for the book and you can still charge minors for lost materials. And then later on, they say, wait, I found it. Here's the book. We now don't have to refund their money, but we always do anyway. So we basically, when somebody brings us back our good to our customers and we just make sure that they're getting proper credit. And we do want people coming back into the library and not being put off by an overdue charge or, or something like that. This does raise the question, we're still the only library that has fines in the Southern Maryland region. And we're, we're getting enough in fines that given how tight this budget's going to be, I don't think we're going to recommend for next fiscal year eliminating fines. But we will give that consideration to you in June. It would have a lot of good in terms of how we interact with customers who obviously don't necessarily like getting fines for well, some of them are delighted by it actually. Oh, I'll happily pay you. Others, you know, it's, it becomes a conversation that our frontline staff, which they didn't have to have, but if it's going to be somebody's job, we'll give that careful consideration for you. Senate Bill 591, and I, I didn't list the House bill. The collective bargaining bill has passed. I don't think the governor is going to veto that. So this is not a pro-union bill. It's not a pro-management bill. It simply guides the process by which if a library, their eligible members would vote to have collective bargaining, it guides that process. I can tell you that it's already had an effect down here. I have received a Freedom of Information at request asking for the names of all our employees, their full-time, part-time status, the number, their hiring dates and their compensation. And that is a matter of public record. So I will be responding positively to that. We also received a request, and this is a person we know to be affiliated with unions, for any salary study we've done. And we did one in 2014 before I got here. And I've already shared the results of that salary study. So we're cooperating fully. Just expect, now that this is law, and we know that Calvert and Charles have received the same requests, that there will be an effort moving forward to engage all Maryland library employees in collective bargaining, collectors about five, mostly central systems who already are. So we'll just advise you on that as it, as it is occurring. Obviously, you two are management as part of this. So we have to be very careful about what we say regarding collective bargaining. And I'm rather familiar with this from working in Ohio where a lot of other systems have collective bargaining about what we can and can't say. So we'll be very careful as we are discussing this.
Did you say that was a FOIA request?
Yeah, it was, yeah, Freedom of Information Act, yes.
And was it from an individual or from an individual representing an organization?
It was from an individual. But we know that individual has ties.
Do you anticipate if this thing goes forward, would library systems be approached one-on-one or collectively like everything in Smurla or us and then Charles and then?
I don't know. I, that would be something that the people who are seeking to involve employees in collective bargaining would be deciding. And their strategy is their own and they're not going to share them with, with me. So we'll just have to see. My, my sense is that if they're getting information about all the systems. So we'll just have to see. Um, my, my sense is that if they're getting information about all the systems, that they will look and see, okay, who's getting the least amount of compensation and then maybe start their efforts there. But I, you know, it's not something that, that I know. Um, so um, we will um, as, as necessary, put out careful language to our employees about what the strengths and then the possible ramifications of unification of a, a unionization are. Um, we'll look later in more detail about the effects of Senate Bill three seven eight, House Bill seven eighty five, the Freedom to Read Act, which has passed. This is an emergency act. It will become law. It will become law as soon as the governor signs it, which could be any day. I suspect he's been rather distracted by the unfortunate tragedy in Baltimore. Um, but this will become law and we'll look later at the specific guidelines that it gives. But the basic um, the, the, the basics of, of what it does is that it sets out standards that all libraries, including schools and academic libraries must have, which basically say that works may not be removed on partisan doctrinal or religious grounds. That employees who stand up for keeping those works in libraries and are under attack even by their own boards, and that's, this is nothing personal, just what the law is about, are protected from being um dismissed. And that boards basically also have to follow the guidelines that are set out in the state. So it kind of prevents, as has actually happened in one instance, not in libraries, but in schools, a board going as if we're rogue and saying, we're going to remove all these books. Um, so it does basically guarantee um libraries the right to maintain the collections that they want to have. It doesn't say that libraries have to have particular books. It doesn't say that we can't maintain our own collections. Simply that if we have works that we have collected that we wish to maintain, it's going to give us the right to better hold on to those. If a county library would not adopt these standards, they'd be at risk of losing their state funding. The legislation adequately protects our employees, yes. Um, and I sent an article to you basically talking about how in some states that are passing laws that if a person complains about a book and the librarian defends it, that, and that librarian could be subject to jail time and fines. Yes, this adequately protects our staff from that kind of punishment. It's, the, the fiscal note's the only thing that gives it any teeth. But it's a little problematic in that if we have a library board who says, fine, we don't want our state funding because what we really want to do is shut down the library, it's very problematic. So I, I did help, you know, I was involved with the committee that kind of gave the library version of this, which then a state version was adopted with some of our recommendations. I, I would say that um, the other thing it kind of doesn't protect against is that um, if we um, or any library were to be involved with the controversy, um, it doesn't mean that your library has to be continued to be funded. We, we could see a systematic defunding. They, they couldn't take money away, but they say, fine, we're not happy with the library. We're not going to give you money. Um, so it does not protect against that. Um, so we have already shared kind of news about this with our, our library employees and we keep them abreast of what's going on. Legislation basically said, you know, um, we do not have carte blanche to do anything we want here. We will continue to maintain good relations with the county and with our customers on what's in the library and do our best to have a balanced collection that represents all while not um, getting into controversies.
When you say, um, a minute ago, you said, uh, we or they could choose to not fund the library. You're talking about the commissioners.
Yeah.
Not at the state level, but at a county level.
No, at the county level, yeah. Yeah. Well.
Let's be specific. When you say not fund, are you talking about going to zero? Or to put the squeeze on?
In theory, the commissioners control the budget. Yeah, in theory, they could give us.
There, there is, there isn't.
Give us nothing or reduce us or increase us or?
So I'm thinking about what happens if we, if we get sideways of somebody up there uh, and we go back to the time of troubles.
Well, and, and our, our aim, I, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't want to interrupt you.
And any county agency is subject to that. The sheriff, the board of education, health department, they're all subject to those you know, political ramifications. You know, if the health department had screwed up something royally with COVID, you know, they would feel the pain. The uh county attorney and state's attorney got rewarded for some of the initiatives they've taken to fight crime. Now, if it had gone the other way, you would see that. So money is politics and they use it. At any time, they could cut the library's budget or increase it. So.
We.
We're always subject to that.
Absolutely, yeah. So we, we do have a state law that says the county has to provide at least sixty percent of a one hundred percent funding, which is the total of the county and the state. So they couldn't completely defund us by law, but we're very fortunate in that our county funds us more than they need to. So they're already covered under that law, so they could say, well, the library gets nothing this year. I'd like to think that it would be more a budget issue. The county has no money. We can't give anybody a raise. So that, but that could happen. This law would not protect against that. So again, we just need to make sure we're maintaining good relations with the county, with our customers. Um, you know, an individual might complain, this law gives us protection against having to remove a book. Um, so I, I'd like to think that we're in a really good place right now and we're not seeing a lot of unrest among our customers. And we've been careful about what we do and will continue to be.
My understanding from this, I think the state law is a very good thing. I think it's, it's going to be really helpful and, and I, I'm glad it's in effect. And I also think we need to continue to maintain really strong relationships with the commissioners, with the community. And I think we've, we've seen a really positive couple of years and I'm grateful for that and I look forward to continuing.
Uh, amen to that, Michael. So um, yes, um, we'll, we'll talk, we'll, we'll look in a couple of minutes at exactly what our policies might be. How, how they might be changed to have this come into effect. Um, a strategic planning update. Um, you will receive a much more detailed presentation on the strategic planning process from Library RQ, our um, our, our vendor. Um, but I wanted to give you a brief overview of where we are right now. No, don't do that. Planning process from Library RQ, our, our, our vendor. Um, but I wanted to give you a brief overview of where we are right now. And I have a, I have a PowerPoint for you. Death by PowerPoint here. Um, I will say that this is a um condensation of an eighty-six slide presentation I have from the vendors. And in addition to that, there's many, many pages of data of um the results of our staff survey. They did meet with staff and the results of meeting with customers, of results of meeting with you. Of a lot of data analysis of our circulation and our user visits. So this is really a distillation so far. Um, right now, there is a draft of a strategic plan that they have shared and it's out with a team of our library staff who are going to be looking at it. To, to talk about that, but I don't think, they, they kind of gave it to us earlier this week and I don't think our staff has had as much time to um, absorb that and comment on those as I want. So we'll meet with them on Monday and just say we need in, in two weeks, another meeting with you because I want that group of staff, and it's all across the organization to have some input in this. Um, and then we will give that back to Library IQ. They will present a plan then to you and you don't have to adopt that plan. That will be, you know, your chance to see it. Um, so before the end of the fiscal year, um, they will be done their work. But it, it might be, if you want more time to look at the plan yourself, that we won't have adopted it just yet. So you'll be involved with the creation of this.
At the point of adoption, what do you see its lifespan being?
Well, it's supposed to be a four to five-year plan, but I would anticipate in three years, we're probably going to want to look at it again. Pretty typical for a strategic plan. So uh, um, uh, just go ahead and flip slide there. These are the areas that Library IQ has been, let me move my mic, has been doing analysis on. And you see it's quite a bit of what we do. And I think that they were a good choice as a vendor. And please stop with questions as we go along.
Could I just interrupt? If we do hide self-view on the Zoom, that might make the slide itself bigger. In that upper right where it says view.
You, you've also got it in your packet.
Thank you. My aged eyes, I need all the help I can get.
All right, uh, slide please. Now, a lot of this data comes from the year twenty twenty one, and let me explain the reason why. Um, they are looking at libraries across the state, across the country. And so the statistics come from the Institute of Library and Museum Sciences, the IMLS. And twenty twenty one is the last year that they've got data for so far because they collected from libraries all over the country. The next data dump from them will be June, but you know, our process will be over before they can analyze that. And I include just some of these things because although twenty twenty one was a COVID year, it gives us some sense of how we're stacking up with other libraries in Maryland and eventually with some of our direct sort of peers in Maryland. Um, so on this slide, it's taking a look at our budget. And what you can see is that, I'm gonna need my glasses too. Um, the national average is in black. This is total operating budget per capita. So the average for most, uh, for the whole nation, you see in the black line. The yellow line is the per capita expenditures of Maryland state libraries. And the green line is Saint Mary's County Library. So what does this suggest? Um, A, that Maryland libraries in general are pretty darn well funded compared to the national average. And that Saint Mary's County Library doesn't have the resources of some other Maryland libraries or even meet the national average. There's not to say that we're badly funded, just so much as that's not, you know, our, in sort of total funding from the state, we're eighteenth out of twenty-four of the counties.
And is that mostly because of that goofy formula they use?
Um, that has something to do with it, although we're actually being more a beneficiary than some of the other libraries that are these days. Because, well, our wealth has gone up, our population has gone up some. In this upcoming fiscal year, there are libraries in Maryland under that goofy formula that are getting less from the state. We're going to get a little more. So um, it's more when you factor that about seventy-five of our center of funding comes from the county and that's pretty typical for Maryland libraries that we are, county per county, we may not have as much. Slide please. Um, they're looking at our data. Now, this is a twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, but in that year, seventy-nine percent of our visitors checked out a book. And the Maryland average is sixty-three percent of visitors are checking out a book. Now, um, a- again, this was a COVID year, um, and I don't know that you can say that's going to hold true now. Um, but I'm pretty sure it's accurate. Circulation of our physical um items is a driver for people to visit this library.
So defining visitor. If I came to the library five times this year, I'm not one, I'm five visitors.
Yes.
Every visit I make.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah. This, this is not individual users. Thank you for that clarification, Judith. If somebody comes to the library, so, and we'll, we'll see more about this in a couple of minutes. But basically what happens in many instances, people come in the library, we call them power users. They might get twenty, thirty books for their kids. They might get five or ten reads for themselves. And so an individual sort of physical user might drive a lot of circulation. And in fact, it's eighty percent, but they're not eighty percent of our users. We'll see in a couple of minutes. But it is important that um, we are keeping up the, the materials budget. I will say, as this uh, I, um, we'll see that, that in a couple of minutes. But um, we are seeing that, you know, our circulation has declined from its peak in twenty seventeen. COVID has a part to do with that. Part of it is just all the number of things that you can do, streaming media, you know, social media, um, all the things that are sort of competing with people's attention. That's a national trend. That's not us. It really is the case that libraries aren't circulating as much physically as they were. If we looked at our digital circulation, it goes like that. It is still growing, growing, growing. Slide. Um, ki- kind of their conclusion there is that al- although um, our materials are important, engaging people through programs and events is also vital for our continued success. And we're making great steps in that with our mobile library and our stepped-up programming. Um, but it is something we're to have continued to do. Um, in terms of our collection budget, um, we again are not spending as much per capita as most Maryland libraries and as the nation. And we are spending less than we were five, six years ago, just because we had a lean period and we tried to give staff a boost and that meant a little bit less towards the collection. I hope that we can correct that. A slide please. So it's nine point two percent of our total budget. National average is about ten point seven. Um, per capita is three point seven as a twenty twenty-one. Um, so basically, um, what they're suggesting, and we'll look in more detail to this later, is that we take a careful look at the collection. What's really hot areas? Make sure we're investing heavily in those. And also be looking at areas where the circulation is just not very high and try to cut back on those. Um, I will say in funding, we're eleventh in circulation. So this is an area where people do value books and despite that sort of lesser funding, we, we do see that people are very interested in coming to us and reading. Slide. Uh, I want to draw your attention to the bottom part of this to start with during twenty twenty-three. So these are last year's figures. Forty-six point five percent unique patrons and, and this, there could be overlap between these groups. Somebody who gets physical might also get digital. But forty-six point five percent of the people who borrowed, borrowed physical items, so that's DVDs, that's mostly books. Thirty-eight percent got overdrive and fifteen point five percent got hoopla. Now, the physical items are eighty percent of our circulation, the digital twenty percent roughly. But that's not the breakdown of who's using it. In fact, fifty-three point five percent of our users are digital users. The number of them now is higher than the number of people who, who are printing. Now, again, there could be overlap and I suspect there is. But that digital use is attracting more and more people. But the limits on what we can offer in terms of circulations per month or the availability through overdrive probably limits the growth of that circulation. We are struggling with hoopla right now. Um, the use of it has increased greatly since January. And we're hoping to get money from Smurla. We were hoping to have money from the county to make that no longer dependent upon friends. to make that no longer dependent upon friends funding. We just don't know if we're going to be able to do that yet. But hoopla is a bit of a budget drain. You see, we're spending 14.5% of our collection budget on that, but it's only bringing in about 4% of circulation.
Michael, for the record, would you give us a thumbnail explanation of hoopla?
Sure. Hoopla is a digital service that offers audiobooks. That's the most popular thing. E-books, music, television and movies, and they're always available. So if you see it there, you can get it, unlike some of our other services where there might be a waiting list for something. And that's the reason why it's so popular. The audiobooks can be more expensive and one thing we're looking at is lowering the sort of tier at which will allow an audiobook to be accessed. Right now it's $2.99 per. We may decrease the number of circulations per month. Right now it's four and try to lower some of the costs of hoopla. I'd like to keep it because it is something that looking strategically, we're seeing growth in digital. We're seeing hunger for digital among our users. And you see that percentage going up. And I don't want to lose hoopla, but we're going to have to look at it really carefully, just to be honest.
Does that track with a certain age demographic?
It's primarily adults. Not very much in, in children's. And that's pretty much the case across our digital. It's primarily our adult users are interested in it. If you haven't looked at hoopla, I would encourage you to do so. It has hundreds and hundreds of thousands of titles. It's a lot of great stuff. It's not the most current in many cases, books, because those would be even more expensive. But it's a great service. We're just kind of really careful about what we're doing is that we are seeing a growth in digital. And the encouragement from Library IQ is not to ignore digital, to try to look where we might have growth.
Can you tell me what's the, you said they did books and music and what else?
Audiobooks, ebooks, music, television shows and movies.
Can you see, I imagine you can see what's the number one item?
Audiobooks are by far the most popular item there.
Get a breakout of what's
Yes.
used every month or something.
Yeah, we do. Yeah. So we, we know what the expenses are and it's primarily the audiobooks and people like listening to them on a commute while traveling. I certainly do that now. Usually I, I use our, our palace service, which we don't, which is not pay per use. But when walking, many people might have, you know, an MP3 player or our phone more likely these days that they use while doing, you know, work around the house. I would have thought music would be more popular, but it's really not. It's really the audiobooks that are the big circulator there. Our goal. Palace will, will not be any problem keeping. I'd like to have both what I'd like to have happen. And we keep working with the Palace project, with the hoopla folks, to have the hoopla titles integrated into Palace so that it's a one stop shop. My goal is to keep both. You see, we've got, you know, we, we've got about 2,200, and you'll see the actual numbers come in as people who use it on a regular basis. I don't want to disappoint those people and lose it. And because it's always available, it's going to remain popular. But we're going to have to take a look at it, to be honest with you.
Michael, in, in the categories of content, movies, et cetera. Is there any of those that are lagging so far behind in popularity that they could be dropped as a cost saving measure?
The, the thing would be that the things are that lag far behind in popularity are, are almost negligible part of the budget. So the audiobooks and the ebooks are the heaviest used there. And graphic novels get some hits there. So I, I, you know, I, I, the, the music is a negligible expense. The movies and television are almost unused. I, I don't think taking those out, although we'd have the option, doing that is going to be what's going to save us money. We're going to have to look instead at the cost per item and limiting the number of certs even more if we're going to keep it, but we'll, we'll be looking.
Thank you.
But digital is increasingly important for us and this community is by and large well connected and values that service. Slide. This is just breaking down our collection. You see the majority of it, about 80% in 2023 was the, was the physical circulation. Slide. This is post-COVID recovery on book circulation. This is not digital. Digitalized say would go it keeps growing and growing and it's probably about 50 or 60% more than it was five years ago. But you see that from January 2020, we are gradually growing our book circulation. We're not quite at our peak.
I can't even read. Is it the X axis is dates?
Yeah, yeah. January 2020. So January 2021, 22 and 23 are along the bottom. We don't have 24 yet.
What's that bottom point? The most bottom? What date is that?
Zero. That would be
So the lowest point is March of 2020.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and so that's months since then. Yep. Yeah, we, we were, we were kind of closed that month, unfortunately, the saddest day of my library career.
What was the dip following that one?
A resurgence of COVID. We, over the holidays of 20 and early 2021, had another severe increase in COVID and we did not reduce hours at that time, but people were staying away more.
Okay. So what are we measuring here? Visitors?
No, this is physical circulation. This is the book circulation. Yeah. So we're not quite at our peak from pre-COVID, but we're, we're getting back up there.
Saying at the same time, the ebooks or things like hoopla, we're going through the roof.
The ebooks continue to surge. Yeah, this is, this is our physical circulation. Yeah.
Is that, was that just a huge increase for hoopla that continued because people found hoopla? Here's how I can get a book?
We're not sure what caused this increase in January.
I mean, this, you mean this January?
This January. Yeah.
I mean, I mean, overall.
Oh, overall.
Drive people to hoopla that never would have gone there before.
Yes.
And did it stay up?
Yes, it, it, it did. And to overdrive as well. And people discovered the services and found they like it. But it was happening even before the pandemic. That just sort of exacerbated it. Libraries were making major efforts from about 2010 in the digital format. And we saw a huge growth really from then. And I'd say what, what limits it, as we've had a discussion with this board before, are the license terms we get on digital, which prevent it from becoming the best bang for our, our book, as it were.
Folks, I would also note, this is an extensive presentation and we got a long ways to go in this and in the meeting as a whole. So let's be mindful.
I, I wanted to give you an update on where we were.
No, I know. It's very helpful, but there's so much we can
Trying to get to, as I said, there, there were 86 slides.
Yeah, no, I get it. This is great.
This is the percent of our collection, which would represent diversity, equity and inclusion titles. And there's about 12 categories. And we have a breakdown slide of all those categories and what percentages are. They say that of a library collection, this is not a bad number. I mean, it's not skewed towards heavily towards that. But it is enough to say that our collection is adequately representing the community as a whole.
Is this based on topics of materials like author identities?
Yes, all of the above. It could be by an author. It could be a subject matter. So some of the typical categories might be black authors of black experience, LGBTQ plus, Native Americans, Asians, anything that would say, okay, this is what might be representing diverse perspectives within the library.
I'm very glad we have this and I, I, it's very important that we have an inclusive and diverse collection. I think in today's political climate with the letters D E I becoming toxic for what may be fair or unfair reasons, it makes me nervous that we have everything labeled as such and that could this be a political vulnerability for us?
They're, they're labeled as part of the cataloging process and also the publishers themselves have BISAC. And so even when the book comes out, it gets these representations. I don't think that it's going to represent a vulnerability because people cannot come in and say, I don't want these books and have a whole category. They have to appeal on an individual book basis. And we'll be looking in a couple of minutes about what our policy says on that. And I think it will be covered well enough.
But, but as shown, the DEI number could overlap other categories so that, for example, let's say a biography of Martin Luther King could show up as a piece of the pie as biography and also in the DEI section, right?
Yeah. And in, in this case, it would be counted as something that would be diverse. And, but yes, it, you know.
We don't have these books pulled out in their own separate section. They are all within the regular collection. So there isn't any labeling as such.
I want to see all those books.
Just to be, to clarify what I said, when I was talking political vulnerability, I don't want anybody coming in and saying, get rid of all your DEI books.
Or you don't have enough.
Well,
or too much.
Yeah. If somebody comes in and says those things, then we'll talk with them. I mean, we are happy to engage with our customers on this. They come in and say, you've got too many. We say, here's a, here's a form. Which ones don't you like? And we will consider those. We're not going to say, yep, we're going to get rid of these. And that's what that freedom to read bill is doing for us.
Yeah, that is good.
Nobody can come in and say, I don't want books about, pick something that is fairly obvious about me. People with Irish descent don't want them. Get rid of them. And we can say, um, see this state law? No.
Well, I mean, the other side of that, and I think there's discussions down the road. And collection even could be part of a director's evaluation is, is the collection balanced? It's not, uh, do you have enough or too little DEI? But across the board, is the collection balanced with a variety of materials? And if you have conservative political authors or economic authors, do you also have those on the other end of the spectrum? If you have with certain views of history, do you have the other end of the spectrum? It's across the board. We want to be able to say we have a really balanced, healthy collection in every subject.
Yeah. Thank you, Judith.
And not continually drive to DEI all the time. But say our, our collection is very balanced. We try to bring in all points of view on every, and as many subjects as we can.
Yes. And that can be in part affected by publishing trends. So you may not see, in part it's driven by whoever's president. And very often what you'll see is that books on, as it were, the, the opposing view from whatever views that president might have become popular and go up the bestseller list. So if this president represents that, you know, his critics will write books and they'll become, you know, if not bestsellers, they'll sell well and we'll have them in the library. But so that, but yes, we do try to, we strive for a balanced collection. Our, our aim is to follow that great quote, which is, it's a great library has something to offend everybody. Certainly we have things out there that I personally would say, I don't like that. But as library director, I don't get to say, we're not going to have that. Slide. This breaks down our total patrons versus our non patrons in the county. I will say this does include 18,000 roughly student cards, which are not heavily used. So, but if you look at our, just our total number of, of people who have cards, it's, it's good. What we need to be working on is growing the number of patrons, customers who are active users. Slide. And here you get some numbers in 2023, 7,254 used physical collection, 509 through 1,000 used overdrive and 2,401 used hoopla. What they're saying here is that's unusual for St. Mary's County Library is that overdrive is 70% of the circulation that our physical is. They're saying that's an unusual number that we've got a high number of digital patrons. Which means we're need, we're, we're going to have to think about how we get more money into digital without trying to take money away from physical, which is going to be a nice trick. Slide. I've already summarized this slide for you. Basically, the, the system they have given us allows us to look on an individual title basis and see what's circulating well, what areas are circulating well, what areas are not circulating well. Keeping access to that database would cost about $7,000. I'm hopeful that Sarah, our, our, our digital coordinator can reproduce those without, in a, in a system we've already got. But we'll be looking at that before we make a decision about going on with the Library IQ. But I've found it very helpful. I can, you know, I can look at our collection and see this book hasn't circulated. This area is not circulating. These areas are not popular. These areas are. And overwhelming sort of percentage of our physical circulation does come from children's areas. A lot of parents come in, get books with their kids, and that's driving a lot of what's happening in terms of our physical circulation. So the recommendation is going to be to increase that. It's going to be a question whether or not we've even got room for them. So it's going to be. Yeah. But so in terms of their collection balance recommendations, can we put more money into physical? Can we spend more in some key children's areas and lessen some adult areas? And look at, when they say DOA, dead on arrival, there's a certain percentage of books, they're very small, that we get hoping that they'll be of interest and nobody ever checks them out. So look at areas where we might be seeing high numbers of those books that nobody's not checking out. I, I can tell you it's not cookbooks. It's not gardening books. Those fly out of here.
How much time do you give a book to see if it's going to be checked out or not?
It, it really depends on the collection. In, in some areas, it can be as, as little as a year. Other collections that say, don't get obsolete as fast. It might be 18 months to two years. But we, but we weed constantly because we also have to make sure that we have space on the shelves to accommodate the items that we have and to make room for all the new things that our customers are demanding.
And hold that thought about reading in just a second. You're going to see something that I think is interesting. A slide.
Sorry, can I go back?
I'll sure go back.
Like what percentage? 1%, 2% are DOA? Of what you buy in a year? 5%?
That, that I don't know. I don't have the latest IQ numbers. They, they're the ones who ran that DOA report for us, which is, which is terrific. Our collections, exactly. And our collections group. And I, we're going to actually review how that report works so that we can reduce that DOA percentage.
You've been doing regularly.
No, this is a brand new report for us.
Because of this.
Yeah, we
Exactly.
This has given us the tool to do it. But I'm hoping that Sarah might be able to replicate this kind of a search in a tool we already have that the state is providing for us. But if not, we're probably going to be looking at, at getting this. But I've been able to look at the collection and I'm not going to remember a DOA number for you right now, but I know that it's there and I can find it.
So the yellow are recommendations, basically. We're getting to kind of
Yes. Yeah. Slide. This is program attendance. And you, you see there was a period there, and this is general interest program attendance and also in person. This does not count our digital. So you see that here we're very happy and our last summer reading numbers, we're particularly happy with. They were all time records even from before COVID. So our programming is absolutely going in the right direction.
Can you tell us the time increments on this? Like what are the time increments as we go?
Oh, okay. Yeah.
All the dates are January.
The one that doesn't have dated yet is 2024.
May I suggest that for future presentations, you know, where it's groups like this and the slides up there, change, change what we're looking at. Get what we're looking at up in the title.
Okay. Well, these are the, these are their slides, which I've just harvested, but I can, I can take that in as a recommendation for next time when, when I'm doing it myself. So programming, we see obviously there was a time when, when we didn't have in-person programming. Um, so programming, um, you, we see, uh, obviously there was a time when, when we didn't have in-person programming, but um, I think our programming, um, is getting back up there and is going very well. And I think Laura and Jill for, and ob- obviously the mobile library, which we're not even seeing here for the most part yet, is going to in, increase that still. Slide please. Um, we started looking at some outreach as part of this, um, and really, um, since the outreach team started, we've had a hundred twenty-five events, and this is not even counting like this most recent one with eight thousand community members, um. This talks about our partnerships. We have long-term and stable partnerships with many, many, many organizations. And it, they note that some of those are kind of one-sided where we get out there in the community, but we are reaching customers that way. So we value those partnerships too. Um, we now have a team of two full-time equivalents there. And we have seen a lot more improvements than we were anticipating there, and I am tracking numbers on, on who they're reaching.
Michael, do you see air room in our outreach efforts to try to increase the number of patrons we have? Are, are there opportunities you see there?
Yes. Well, we're hoping that we're going to see people who are not typically coming to the library, either because of their transportation issues or simply convenience. I don't think it's going to be a gigantic increase, but I do think it will be an increase.
And it's easy for folks at these outreach, outreach events to, you know, get library cards and get on.
They can, they can get a card. They can get on the mobile library, get a card, check something out right then and there.
Nice. Thank you.
Slide. Um, we're, I don't want to run too high with this, but, but, uh, are too long with this, but, um, they had some specific suggestions for us. Increase the number of librarians. Um, hire dedicated staff for ordering. Currently we have about ten people doing ordering. It's more efficient to say, I've got one or two people. That's all they do. That's their job. But so far we haven't been able to create that position. I've wished I could have done it since I got here eight years ago. Um, have more outreach staff is their recommendation. Um, and, uh, among our staff, um, they would like more money. Um, um, they would like to see some dedicated staff for training, staff development, bookkeeping and administration, while we still have a separate staff member for H R and budget management. And currently, um, a lot of that is done by one person. Thank you, Belinda. Um, F S A and H S A options, we get those through the county, so I don't know what we can do about that. Um, additional I T staff for an increasingly tech-heavy workspace are some of their recommendations based on looking, looking at us and so something that we in many cases would like to do. Um, slide. This is library visits and so, um, January twenty twenty-one was pretty flat, um, again, because of that COVID increase, but then we're going back up and steadily back up since then. So I, again, I'm hopeful that we're on a good road for recovery after COVID. Slide. Um, the lower right quadrant, peer dollars per visit. This is from twenty twenty-one because again, we're looking across systems. Let's not consider that one because Charles did not open after the pandemic as early as the others. And so that's going to skew that number. But I think the other ones are useful for us. Uh, upper left quadrant circulation per capita compared to our peers, we're at seven dollars and four cents. Calvert at seven ninety-eight, Charles at two sixty-four, um, and uh, Cecil, Cecil at five oh three. Um, so we're fairly, um, we're doing really well in terms of circulation. Why Charles is so low in the numbers of circulation per capita? This is every person checking out a book. So we're second and right up there with Calvert. So doing very well there. And Calvert does have a higher, you know, budget than we do, so they can get more materials in. At the upper right peer visits per capita, um, we are again second after Calvert in this one, but up ahead of Cecil County, which has the same number of branches as us, well ahead of Charles. And our peer, um, our, our percentage, our, our expenditures per capita, you see that Calvert is at fifty seventy-nine. Cecil's at sixty-four twenty-nine. So every person in the county, this is what they're spending. Um, Charles at thirty-seven oh two, us at thirty-seven point thirty-seven, so substantially lower despite the fact that in circulation and visits, we're right up there. So I think that we can tell our county commissioners, you're getting a great investment for your money compared to our peer libraries. And I hope, I wish we could get twenty twenty-three figures and maybe we can figure out some way to do that on our own. But I do think that Saint Mary's County Library offers an incredible value for the money put into it. Slide. Um, this is the whole county and I didn't give it to you, but I can if you wanted, but you probably want to print it off. These are demographic cohorts. The people in the county, who are they and what are their likelihood of visiting the library? Our sweet spot is cohort number four, medium household income, a hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars, fifty-four percent with children under eighteen, eighty-nine percent homeowners, and they go on and on and on about who these people are. Our sweet spot in terms of the likelihood of coming to the library is that cohort five is a little less in terms of the household income. Cohort nine is, um, uh, almost the same amount of, um, household income, but they're seniors without kids. And those are the people that we think are most likely to be our customers and that we need to think about targeting. It raises a real issue though. What do we do with say cohort? Number two, they're not as many in the county, but their median household income is twenty-five thousand dollars. They might need a library more. So we're just trying to think of how do we attract the most customers? How do we spread our services out equitably? How do we pay attention to people who really need a library as opposed to someone who likes a library? Um, it's going to be an interesting challenge for our future and something we need to carefully consider. Drive up the customers or with any luck, both serve people who maybe don't have as much money or aren't, you know, investing in their children, still serve them and attract a larger, sort of more likely to visit the library group. Slide. Um, I will summarize this very quickly. Um, our peer groups want more of what we're offering. They want more books. They want more programs. They want more services. Um, one thing that keeps coming up and it's going to be a challenge for us. I think we're doing a great job marketing the library. We have. Points that they're identifying as sort of strategic focuses for our next three to five years. And those are in, working on digital literacy, innovation and a community gathering place. And we've got all kinds of specific suggestions for each from them that we'll be reviewing with them when you see the draft of the strategic plan. They have about, and they're all really specific and action oriented, about fifty suggestions for us under each, you know, under these different things. But they view our primary users as connected, um, affluent, able to make transitions to sort of new things. And that we're as an organization ready to innovate. So I'll give you a specific, a specific example. Interviewed people from the schools and the people in the school said, we love the library, their partnerships. So we're great. We're working really well with them. And our consultant Debbie turned me later and said, I've never heard that before. Usually I go and talk to people from the schools and they've done over a thousand libraries and the schools say, we don't know what's going on at the library. So I think that the basics of what we're doing right now, they've looked at it and said, innovation isn't what you need. I'm sorry, you know, the basics aren't what you need to do. You're doing great. You're everything. Now it's time for you to start thinking about what more you can do. Our challenge will be to figure out what more we can do with the of our budget and staffing. But I'll have some specific suggestions for you. Um, Jay, uh, slide. Yep, that's it. As I say, they, they really said that you are as much as any library we've ever of the thousand we've looked at. We've got everything down as far as the basics go. So I think we can be very proud of that. I'll have some specific suggestions for you when those digital areas coming up. Would you like to take a break?
Yes, uh, that was a, a really helpful presentation. I'm very excited to see what the plan includes and we'll really get involved at that point. Uh, let's entertain a motion for a five-minute break. I'm moved. We got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. Okay, we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. All right, welcome back, folks. Uh, let's continue. Michael, can you keep us moving with the health clinic update?
Sure, that's really fast. July first, that's going to open for our eligible county, I'm sorry, library employees. It will also be county employees and school employees. It's already open to school employees, is my understanding. Um, John, you you told me that there was a merger recently, so it's not necessarily going to be run by the same people. Um, but
My understanding probably be the same employees, but
Same employee.
You know, I would recommend getting more details from Mr. Westcon.
Yeah, so they I'm sorry?
It's going to be acquired by somebody called Marathon Health.
Yeah.
And the thing that the employees need to know is if you're using anybody in the MedStar system now for your primary care or especially, anything you do right now with Everside, I don't know about Marathon, does not migrate over to your records
Yeah.
over at MedStar. And vice versa. So you go in and they say, well, let's see, what's your history of, let's say, blood pressure? And they can't see it. So just FYI.
You you are allowed to have information transferred though, so you you can have them notify your your MedStar folks of of what they did.
Yes. That's not my experience at all.
Mine either.
I've been to lots of MedStar places and they all have my records. But that's my experience.
Um, I I have not had that experience. When I changed from one provider to another, they didn't seem to know who I was. Um, so um, we are starting the process of looking at AV upgrades in the meeting rooms at Hall and Lexington Park. Um, we will do RFPs for those. Emma will be involved because they will be large enough to do that. Right now, we're just looking at exactly what we want to have. Was thinking we might release those RFPs already, but given the sort of county budget situation, we'd probably wait to to we have some sense of what the budget might be, but the county did specifically set aside a hundred and four thousand dollars for each of those two libraries specifically for that purpose. So uh, we will just have to see. Um, and I'd like to get it going as soon as we possibly can. So once the budget's in place, we'll release those RFPs. You asked for a uh, consideration of how we work with the county in terms of our computer and phone networks. So here's a summary for you. We access the internet and phone services via phone cables. I'm sorry, fiber cables that run from each of our branches to the emergency services building center. So the county IT is responsible for maintaining those those fiber lines. The fiber lines that the uh, uh, computer networks use is connect to a network switch which allows direct communication between the branches. So there's a fiber line running to each one, and we've got a switch that allows them all to talk with each other. Um, and using a VPN connection, we're able to have secure transmissions with a firewall at each branch. So basically, then there's an, there's a another fiber line that runs from there out to the sort of connect to the internet as a whole. So we're using I'm sorry, what?
The county is like a hub.
Yeah, exactly right. And the phone system is the same. We're using those same sort of fiber lines. Their response, and then we have our numbers in their server. Because we kind of use some same numbers with them and that allows us just to do a direct four digit transfer. And so basically, that's when they said in the MOU, we will provide these things. That's what they're doing. It's not like they were planning on paying for it. You know, we have the connectivity along those lines, we still have to have a provider who does that for us. So that's kind of the the answer to that question.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, we do have a couple of action items on the material selection policy and the program and event selection policy. It's pretty much the same thing, and you can see in red the changes that I am asking for for the material selection. We had some language in there from the American Library Association Bill of Rights. And I've, and that's in the first paragraph. You see, I've stricken that. And the reason why is we're not going to be referring to the American Library Association. We're going to be referring to Maryland's Freedom to Read Act as the justification for our policy. And if you you've seen that there's several states that are trying to say their libraries may not be involved with the ALA. And so we basically, while we have my relationships with the ALA in in terms of our individual memberships, we do not have a library membership. And but our individuals can belong and get training and go to conferences. But so we are going to put those standards, and I took the standards straight from the Freedom to Read Act and those you see in red there. And that's exactly what the law is going to say.
So this brings this in line with the 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 with the recently passed legislation?
Yes, exactly. This is what that legislation says we have to adopt as standards. So we're going to do that. And then just a couple of clarifying statements later on, again, all in red. The first is that we all, board director staff must abide by the state standards and follow established policies for election materials and for responding to any materials challenges. That's pretty much in the spirit of the law is that nobody gets to say, well, guess what? We're not going to do it. Under complaints about my materials and programming, we just reiterate the fact that we are going to be following the standards. In accordance with the Freedom to Read Act, the library will not exclude materials because of the origin background reviews of the network of the works creator, the library will not prohibit or remove material because of partisan or doctrinal disapproval. And then all requests for reconsideration must be made with the materials reconsideration form. We do, we do have that form that customers can fill out. Will not accept materials reconsideration request from non-county residents. And this has been happening kind of nationally. Somebody from Florida sends you a list of 500 books that I don't like those in your library. You're not paying our taxes. Um, the library will not accept more than three requests from an individual in a one month period. And that's to prevent, again, somebody from giving a list of 500 books because there's organizations out there saying, check if your library has these. And it has, again, happened in other places. People just drop that list on your desk and say, I want all these gone. And our process now is for each one, you've got to fill out a form and we're not taking more than three a month.
Is that in the state law?
And so you're going to save our staff lots of time.
So where do you get three from?
I'm sorry.
So why did you come up with the number of three per month?
Because that's a reasonable amount for a person to protest in any given month as opposed to twenty. Um, and and yet I think it does not overly restrict them.
Plus, you've got to service those requests.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, we've got a, for each one, what happens is we form a team. The team looks at the book, it looks at reviews, it looks at other or not other libraries have it, it makes a recommendation either to keep the book as is, to move the book in the collection, let's say, well, we didn't really want that in children's, let's put it in adult. Or in fact, to remove a book. And we take that, you know, uh, we we take that responsibility very seriously.
So so how many on average of these requests do you get now a month?
Uh, practically none, I'm pleased to say. Um, we got three this year. Is that right?
So we've not had many is the bottom line.
Yeah, we 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 get very, very few.
A few a years.
Yeah.
What you're getting.
Yeah.
Nobody's come in yet and dropped a list of 500.
Nobody has done that, but I would just as soon preclude it.
Simply haven't been discovered.
So I think we can entertain a motion to approve these revisions to the material selection policy.
So moved.
Well,
I'll second.
All right. Thank you, John. Thank you, Tressa. Discussion time.
This isn't law yet. Governor hasn't signed this. I think we're we're jumping ahead, uh, cart before the horse here.
But it's going to be.
But it's not the law yet. The governor hasn't signed this. So I I would suggest that we wait until after the governor sign this and it is in fact law.
No, I I, following that up, like to suggest we table it for a month for possible adoption then.
Does that put us in a vulnerable position then if the law, once the law has been signed, but we have not implemented policy to follow it?
Like a second question would be, when the governor signs it, when does the law go into effect? Michael, do you know?
No, we don't know. We're expecting him to be signing it very soon, and it could possibly be signed before the next time you need.
But typically, they will put an effect date, October first, January
This is an emergency act. As soon as he signs, it is law.
I said typically. So typically, there's a date and we might be able to find that out, but um, is it, is it immediate? The day he signs it is in
The day he signs it, the instant he signs it, it is in effect.
I think because it's got that emergency act designation, it does go into effect once, as Michael has said.
So he hasn't signed it yet.
Yes.
And we don't know that, I mean, there's a possibility he doesn't sign it.
Um, actually, um, actually, the governor encourages legislation. He will certainly sign it.
You could pass it today with the condition that it goes into effect the day the law is signed.
Governor signs it, yeah. Or the the date, the the date the law states. So I think it should be more. It will be effective
So
when Maryland law says it's effective.
Okay, so then perhaps we would want to entertain an amendment so that um, the revi, the policy revision would go into effect as soon as the Freedom to Read Act is in effect.
Um, yes. I think that would be
Our our move to adopt the amendment.
Okay, so can we get a second to adopt the amendment? So then we vote on the amendment? All in favor of adopting the amendment that this policy revision, if we approve it, would go into effect once the Freedom to Read Act goes into effect? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? Okay, so the amendment passes. Now we would vote on the underlying motion. Any more discussion?
Which is to pass both of these?
No, which is, we're only talking about the material selection policy.
But they're both the same.
They're both, they're both They're slightly different.
Yeah, but they're both going to the freedom to read and the
Yes, but we haven't gone through the second policy line by line. So let's let's just focus on the material selection policy for now, and then we'll do this again as we need to. All right. So now on the table is a motion to approve these revisions to the material selection policy with the amendment that the revisions go into effect when the Freedom to Read Act goes into effect.
I have an administrative question.
So I think I'm in the right version here. All requests for considerations must be made with the program and events reconsideration form.
John, that is the other document.
Okay.
It is it, can I ask a question then about content at this time? Is that appropriate or do we already be on that?
Are you looking at the material selection policy?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, bottom of page one. Under responsibility. It says the uh, second sentence, authority and responsibility of selection of library materials are delegated by the board to the library director. And under his or her direction, staff qualified. The next sentence says the board director and staff must abide by Maryland state standards and follow established procedures for selection materials. So we've delegated that responsibility to the director and staff. We're also saying that our we're saying that we personally are responsible for material selection. But we've delegated that responsibility. Is this a a conflict in what we're saying here? And I I don't know how I can be personally responsible for the material selection for the director and staff. We're we're not, we're never involved personally in that.
Could I, could I address your question? Part of the reason for the law is what happens is that at least one board has come along and said, never mind what our policies say. We are now seizing control. And we're saying these books will not be in the library. And the reason for having the board there is just to stipulate that not, and this board has a strong tradition of protecting intellectual freedom, and I'm not suggesting in any way that I don't think that's the case. But let's say in the future of four members of the board say, we're taking back this responsibility. And we're going to set policies in place that says, no, we're responsible and we get to have oversight and selection of materials. And what this is saying is that under those circumstances, you you wouldn't be able to do that. And this is in part an attempt to prevent boards from going going rogue, as it were. That's why that's there.
I mean, I mean, to me, this is a reasonable statement. And I think it does, you know, we've talked about making sure that our actions are incorporated in policy and that we're not just relying on institutional memory that can fade and change. To me, this language just affirms that all of us are abiding by the law.
In that paragraph, then, would we do what we're trying to do by putting a period after the word standards? Says we're all going to abide by what the state's standards are, period?
I mean, I I think the other clause about following policies is important too, so I I'd be inclined to leave it, I think. Any other discussion? Um, I think, can we move to a vote? So we have the amended motion on the table to adopt these revisions to the material selection policy to go into effect when the Freedom to Read Act goes into effect? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? All right, motion passes.
The materials, um, we we do have a a policy for, uh, I'm sorry, for programs as well.
Yep.
And on this one, it does not have quite as many additions because it's simply not likely that anyone's going to come in and and sort of object to a whole series of programs. It's more likely to be an individual kind of thing. So it just adds the standards, the same statement that everyone's going to abide by that and that we will accept request for consideration only if they use the form and that we're not going to take them from non-county residents.
And that's where I would like to weigh in. So administratively, I would like a current copy attached.
Sorry.
Consideration form.
Oh, yeah, I was thinking the same thing. Um, I guess on both these, where where is that form and should we?
It's available online. It's not part of these policies. It's not in the same place.
Is there a link to it in the like online version of the policy?
Not available online.
It's not available online?
They have to
I'll have to ask for it. Okay.
And that's procedures, so it's not typically something we give to the board is a form is part of our procedures.
I'm not withdrawing my suggestion.
I think we need a form attached to the policy.
Um, all right, so let me, let's get the ball rolling here. Let me, we can entertain a motion to approve these changes to the program and event selection policy to go into effect when the Freedom to Read Act goes into effect.
You looking for a motion?
Yeah.
So moved?
Thank you, John.
I'll second that too.
Thank you, Tressa. Do you want to throw out your ideas, a amendment to the motion?
Yes, I would like to amend it to the point where a copy of the form is attached to this for reference. Doesn't mean we can't change the form or anything else going on, but I'd like it's to be a part of this document.
Somebody want to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion about that? I I personally, I do agree with Tressa. I don't think we need to connect that to this policy, and I think that the library's procedures, as they are are, you know, stand just fine by me. Uh, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of adopting the motion that John laid out, please say aye.
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 Right, any uh, opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Dorothy?
Can we go over that again? Because I missed that.
Sure. So the motion is to adopt a
The materials one or the library?
We're on the event program and event selection policy.
Yeah, it's not, the page is not titled.
It's this one, okay. It does not seem, so I could, I can show her. So
Please.
In the red, in the last page, it says all requests for reconsideration must be made with the program and events reconsideration form. John's suggestion is that we actually attach the form here so we can see it. John's suggestion is that we actually attach the form here so we can see it.
So why don't we re-vote?
So, um, John and Judith have voted that the form should be attached. And I should point out that this is not something we give out as a separate thing. This is just what's in our policies. And Tressa and Michael and John Johnson have voted, no, they don't have to have the form attached to this. And so you need to vote, attach the form or not.
I don't, I don't see a reason to attach it if they can come in and request it.
Okay. Okay, so then in that case, the votes, the aye votes are two, the nay votes are four. So the motion does not pass.
The amendment does not.
I'm sorry?
The amendment.
The amendment to the motion does not. Thank you, John. Alright, any other discussion? Let us vote on the underlying motion then, to amend the program and event selection policy to go into effect when the Freedom to Read Act goes into effect. So moved? Wait, that motion is already on the table.
Oh, alright.
Yes. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstained? The motion carries.
Um, we're asking for a small budget reconciliation, um, and let me find that. Ah, there it is. Um. Lexington Park and Lenner Town Supplies are zeroed out. And we would like to move seven hundred fifty into each budget line, taking it from the mobile library maintenance budget because we had not have expenses for the mobile library all year. So that budget line is, is clear.
Move to adopt as presented.
Thank you, John.
Second.
Thank you, John. Discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving this, um, budget amendment? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstained? Okay.
And I'll need to get a signature from you on that form as well. Thank you. Um. It is, uh, moving on to new trustees, trustee business then.
Yes, alright, so we have two items under the new trustee business on the agenda before we talk about anything else. The first is a conversation we began last month when we had a smaller group in effect. We began talking about ideas of a possible procurement policy. Again, we are just kind of talking about this idea. Uh, John Walter has prepared an initial draft last month and has some revisions here that are in our materials. Uh, John, do you want to introduce this at all?
So briefly, I'm not conversant enough with how to make, uh, all the neat things happen. So last month in the original version, items B and C, uh, there were some thoughts that maybe that could be changed. Uh, ideally, I would have stricken them out and put something new in in red. But anyway, the old B and C is out. And they've kind of been condensed and everything relabeled, uh, that we will follow all the provisions of Emma. And I don't think there's any change, uh, further on down the line. I could be wrong on that, but it was basically a, uh, a response to the objections about the old items, B and C.
John, could you zoom out a little bit and just say a word about the broader context of this? And sort of your thoughts on how this would be helpful or necessary?
Yeah, I, I think what we need to do is, we need to create a cycle by which we are periodically evaluating the people who are providing goods and services to us. Um, I would not suggest that we review all of them in one year. But to get the cycle started, that a list come to the trustees. And in concert with the staff, we, we identify three to work on. Uh, and so those three are done for the next three years and then we go on, uh, to some more.
Michael, at what point, um, in our current policy, do, uh, do bids come to the trustees for approval?
Um, well, anytime we do an RFP, they do. Um, and the most recent RFP was for the strategic planning process. Before that, it was for the mobile library. Um, I guess what I'd say is that, uh, at the very start of this policy, having annual cost of dollars or more. My understanding last month, um, and Judith, uh, this was something you put forward is that the Emma already has those regulations in place or those recommendations for dollar amounts in place. So we don't need that, um, to say an annual cost of dollars or more. Because if Emma changes its recommendations, we'd have to change the policy. So I don't think we need that. I think we can simply add in, um, accordance with the provisions of, of Maryland Marketplace there or the dollar amount set by Emma there.
I know they had categories.
Yeah, and so I, I don't know that we need a specific dollar amount for you, as long as we're following Emma, we're good. And the other thing I'd just like to say is that, a- as long as conduct the bidding process with qualified vendors in accordance with their visions. If it says that, as long as it means that we can still go outside of Emma, as we agreed last month was essential. Because you can get vendors who may not be participants in Emma. And they might be giving you good services. Or they might be extremely competitive, and I don't necessarily want to eliminate that. You know, people from that market, for example, the two vendors we chose as finalists for the strategic planning, they didn't come through Emma. They came from outside of Emma.
Well, my only response to that is that we're finally getting a recognition that we are obligated to use Emma. I think I would want to have a legal opinion that, uh, we could, we could go outside of that.
I've already presented that to you. The people at Emma said, no, this is a minimum. You may go outside, you may do more. And I copied you on that email last month. So it's not required that we get a bid through Emma. So long as anytime we do a bid, we make sure it isn't Emma. And we'll do that.
Okay.
Any thoughts, comments, questions about this idea of a draft policy?
Well, I mean, I think we, we need a policy. Not sure we're there yet. I think, um, I think John won issues of three per year. So if we're going to review, um, and recompete contracts every three years, at a minimum, every three years. Could do it more often if it's required. But we can't say the number because I don't know how many contracts they have.
I don't either.
So, but you say select three providers for, for rebidding. It should be just one third of the pool. One third of the, whatever that pool is, one, you're gonna, you're gonna be recompeting at least one thirty year pool every three years. So I would say, what I would like to see as trustee is, um, we talk about the, the identifying the list of service providers that, that have the minimum fifteen thousand dollars. And then a schedule for the next three years on when, when they're going to be recompeted. I don't want to decide that, that you guys know your business, you know, who's been out there the longest, who's, what are problematic. But just to see a three-year schedule or maybe, um, the annual schedule. And then, uh, the second part is that, like, when we want to start. Um, and again, I would look for the director for recommendation. If we say, I don't necessarily want to do July, that might be too problematic to start this in July. July might be a crazy busy month for you. Maybe we want to stay, we want to start October first will be kind of our procurement year, or maybe January first. But you don't want to pile your procurement year right on top of trying to run RFPs in June or July when you're busy with other issues. So again, that's like, what would you recommend for a starting cycle? Or you can stagger them. We're gonna, we're gonna do one in the fall, one in the spring, one in the summer.
I'd prefer it not to be July.
Yes, um, and I'm, I think that staggering it is probably the best option. But I will also say that I've been working on our procurement list since you brought this up. And I think it's going to be so much smaller than you actually believe it to be. Most of our over fifteen thousand dollar contracts are not contracts that we have any ability to bid out. We work, there are contracts that we share with Smurla or the other counties, there are contracts that we are tied to through the county themselves. I, I have narrowed it down that basically, um, and I, I'm still working, cause, cause we hadn't had a number yet. It's utilities. There's not a lot of options for utilities. Um, the only one at the moment that we are actually watching is the waste management one. Because Smurla is going to start in June or July. Um, I was talking to them. They're starting a new company, um, for Hall, and we do pay, we, uh, share that cost, um, with Smurla for Hall. Um, and so we want to see what that comes out to and whether or not the service is good. Because their actually ratings were very low even, but they're switching to them anyway. So we're watching that one to see if waste management is an option. Phones are not an option. Electricity is not an option that much.
You have cell phones, right?
We do, so I can tell you about that. Um, we've used AT&amp;T before. Um, I'm going to be honest, they're not great. Um, we do have Verizon at the moment and also, um, with the new mobile library, we require two carriers. Because, um, that is what the, uh, cradle point and the SIM cards require for the mobile library so that they can switch throughout the county. Um, and right now that is Verizon and AT&amp;T. We've been looking at switching from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile. But, um, we haven't made that decision yet.
Yeah, one provider covers the whole county?
No, that, it's not in St. Mary's County. And also the, the mobile library, actually, the Cradle Point requires two. Um, so in addition to that, our Wi-Fi hotspots, um, that is one of our big ones. Um, and we just did that one. We just went out to, um, a new contract with T-Mobile, switching from, um, it was, uh, Sprint, Sprint slap, that, well, that's T-Mobile. It was, um, Verizon, I think, wasn't it? Some Verizon, some T-Mobile. But we just did that switch because those actually were through another vendor. And now we're going directly to T-Mobile, um, which gave, gave us a higher quality Wi-Fi. We went to five Gs instead of four Gs. Um, so that is one we just did, but, so we do have T-Mobile, whether we, that's not a choice. So yes, you can for the, for the cellular phones, but we have already looked into that. We've already made adjustments to that. Um, the only one we're still looking at is switching from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile for the SIM card for the Cradle Point. So.
I mean, so that, I mean, so that's great. So that's what you would show. I don't think we expect more than that. It's that you've identified the service. You've done due diligence at the best price and you've documented you've done it. And that's, that's what we're looking for, is certainly.
Right, and I understand that. I'm just trying to point out like.
But even though they're bigger, maybe they might hit that threshold.
Yeah.
There can certainly be justification why they're, um, but it's a due diligence. We've looked and there's nothing else out there. Who knows what next year is going to bring with cell phones, right? Who knows?
Well, right, although I can't, I, I will say, and I know that this isn't part of that, it's every three years. I would not be checking cell phones every year to switch.
No, I'm just saying that, yeah, you don't want the future breaks.
Yeah.
And that's why we have a recurring repetitive.
Right. My, my point though is that there's just not that many. I mean, I, I think that the one third is fine. But that is actually could just be one per year for that. I mean, because we don't have that many. I will create the list and I'm still working on that to make sure that it's right, but there are just so many, we don't have the control to bid out. Because we share, it's how we keep our costs down. We share with Smurla, we share with the county, or there's not an option.
I, it's really helpful, Linda, to learn more about what is happening. You know, I think that like, the policy is written, could cover some massive organization that has hundreds of contracts. And, and so I think it will be helpful for us to tailor the policy to reality. Would it be, do you think it's feasible for you to sort of have that list for our next meeting next month?
Yeah, I have one in my book right now that I've been working on. So I, I'm, I was waiting because I didn't have numbers attached to what you wanted, the minimum threshold.
Judith, was the, was the number from Emma ten thousand?
Fifteen.
Was it fifteen? Okay, well, we're good. We, we're going to use fifteen for now.
And then, you know, there were lower thresholds with, like I said, different, under fifteen hundred was, you know, make a few phone calls. And then I think fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand was, um, it's in Emma, it was. You can look locally, but just try to document it.
Yeah.
You know, a couple of emails and you've got notes that we, we looked around and I shopped around and maybe this is what we got, so.
And I will say, some of the other contracts that we do have is going to be our accountants, um, our lawyers and, um, our insurance. And I, I, again, these are things I'll document for you, but just so you understand, our accountant is a local accountant. We, we have researched that. It is basically the only one that can do what we want them to do in county. Um, granted, we could put that out. Um, we would then be possibly working with a, either a national company or someone in another place. And right now, our accountant is in Congress. And I can talk to them whenever I want and they are responsive to me within the hour. Um, so that's one thing that we would really want to consider, those kinds of things. Along with our insurance provider, we have an insurance broker and they bid out our insurance. So again, the provider could be bid out. It's the same situation. We are using a local company. We, um, have, have looked around, but we are currently using this particular broker. They have been very great with us. They are very responsive. We often have to get liability contracts for our summer reading programs when they're offsite. They get those contracts for us within the day when we need them. Um, when we did the mobile library, um, they were working with us, getting, making sure that we had the paperwork we needed to drive that library back on the day we drove it back. So we had prepared in advance and they were on, on the record with us saying, okay, we know you're driving today. What do you need? Here it is. Send it out. And then Michael had it on his phone that day. Cause we still didn't know whether or not we were driving it home that day. So those things are important to know why we chose who we chose. Um, and why we may not want to bid out to a national, uh, group.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think it is fitting to a national group. And you can, and.
State group.
If you need an accountant in the county, that can be part of your RFP.
Yeah, and, and.
No.
And I'm not saying that we wouldn't do it. I'm just saying that these are, are, these are the other three that I have on my list that we really have looked into. We, we do keep up to date on them.
So they've been recently recompeted.
Yep.
And so that goes into the list.
Well, then we wouldn't have to look at them for a couple of years.
Yeah, and I'm just giving you the background. So like, of what I see on the list right now, I, I may not be remembering them all. But for the most part, I, this is, you know, and just so you also know, like, we are doing this on a regular basis. It's just hasn't been reported to the board.
So let's continue this conversation next month with the benefit of more detail about current practices and what's happening. And then I think we can see where we are.
Concur. Okay. Uh, the next item then?
Yes. Alright, so Judith, do you want to walk us through this document?
I don't have it. Okay, was it on the table when you got here?
Yes.
This morning?
Is there? Is there one from Sharon's pile we could use? Alright.
So I, so I can't take credit for the work. Who sent me all these? Who got all these there? So these are.
Thank you, Marian.
Really, this is a cut and paste from other library systems in Maryland. There wasn't anybody. And I took, there were a few more, but, um, you could see they get a little repetitive, so. You know, I was going to do it myself and I thought, no, I'm not, you guys see this, um. There are clearly patterns, financial management, staffing, communication. Um, one is operations, um, physical facilities management. So there's, you can see there's similarities in their groupings. Um, the top, the first page, strategic planning, operations, fiscal staffing was from, one of my favorites was Caroline County and I thought looked really good. Page two, which is have a number. There's some little bullets down there. Halfway down managing and operating. This was more of a three sixty, um, document. This managing, demonstrating, representing for people to comment on. Um, the other two pages, I don't, I don't remember what counties they were. So my thought was, if you all wanted to go through here and mark your top five. Think about it. You can email me and say, the top five or six?
I'll add on to what Michael said about that. So the tradition of the library or the policy, the procedures of our library is that all of our staff receive a step. If they're given a step that year, they receive that in the month of their anniversary date. So that's why Michael's is November. And also what, when the date of the, the increase starts for the step. So most likely, and that would be part of the discussion, is if you do that for at the end of July, then would we hold the step until November? But actually, that'd be easier because at the moment we're having to back it. I'm always estimating it because he's getting that halfway through, and I won't know until you actually prove it. So I'm always estimating. Well, for employees, I know. For Michael, I'm estimating.
But it's the same thing we're talking about. We only had hers come in, but there were a couple hundred people on the event.
They had very. And then even with the wine and food, only a few. But maybe four or five.
Well, where we left that was that they were going to come back to it with a proposal of what they were actually saying they wanted to do. And they have not approached me since.
No, I'm a parent.
We're eager to hear them out.
Yeah, and then I went to a book signing in February. The Source Saint Indigo's Mission. It's great, great, written by a priest who was down here for five years, down in St. and he started with a flavor. So it's a great history of the mission churches in St. Mary's County. It's sixteen thirty four to nineteen ninety four. And, and then he gave a talk about it. I was research. And so I just, I'm sure the lyrics, they don't have it yet. So it's at the St. Mary's County Gospel Society. You can buy, copy and read this great, very, very, very detailed history of all mission churches.
Your next meeting is May tenth at Lexington Park Library. April twenty third is the public budget hearing for the county. May seventeen through nineteenth is the Friends of the Library books. It is at the Fairgrounds. And Friday, the seventeenth is for Friends of Library members who get first pack of things. So, but Friends of Library membership is only fifteen dollars. So if you want to get a great opportunity to get some great books, I have the hundred and number, which you can do right from my library's website. And the other two days are general public. And we are. And we're going to be supporting Friends with that, with that opportunity.
Where do we got all of those donations?
That's over behind the armory. And.
Oh, library, new library.
Yeah, the friends are still where they were.
Do you want to talk about what's happening in the flexing?
You mean the, the collection shift? Yeah, okay. So you recall that we told that we got your approval to use friends of money or the Friends of the Library people to change the shelving at Lexington Park, which is very high. And we have a contractor who's willing to come in and lower that shelving in the adult area, create more visibility. Make the library actually more physically attractive inside. So we are going to be having some limited hours at Lexington Park during that week. It will be open. People can reserve books and have them sent there. The meeting rooms will remain open, but the collection areas will not be open for kind of regular business. So just a couple of days where we've got fewer, fewer opportunities in Lexington Park. Is that correct?
It's not limited hours. It's the same hours, they're just limited services.
Yeah, but services back. So the same hours, but, but the ability to get back where the stacks are was not there.
So that actually ends on that Friday that you have your board meeting. So you may see either them finishing or the completed project.
Let's hope for the completed projects. So before we adjourn, I noted three pieces of follow-up and next steps for next month. One, we want to double check the personnel manual about this genetic discrimination piece. We'll take a look at the latest list of contracts and maybe relevant for the payment policy. And then we'll look at the performance evaluations that we're going to work on. All right, I think we can manage an option regardless.
I have one version.
Three, four.
Well, so you probably hear.
It's a chapter, I'm sorry, I think it was six.
Usually at six.
It's at six. If you wish to register to speak. I recommend getting there by five thirty. Typically you sign up, but so.
You get two minutes, three minutes?
Three minutes, yeah. I may be exactly to start my registration speaking at six, but it's, you're given three minutes. This promises to be a very lively. And last time, sort of like this, I put a lot of food trucks there, so we'll just have to see how it goes.
I just have one comment on location. When we went to the county town in Los Angeles. I talked to Rotating Lab, this is granted. She made a point of saying, you're completely, you have to have, be reliable without showing that. If you're doing anything, you're doing the whole. So we keep that in mind, especially.
We, in fact, until we upgrade Charlotte Hall and public, we're not going to be having any impact. We, we had enough trouble when we were there. We thought we had any control. But we don't think that's all as good as we'd like.
So we'll probably be sticking to Leonard Town and Lexington Park until that time. And we hope that we'll have the meeting room upgraded in Charlotte Hall and that the budget will hold firm.
All right, I'm gonna again attempt to adjourn this meeting. Can we entertain a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? Hi, all right. Thanks, everybody. See you next month.